Okay, it's four o'clock. We'll call this meeting to order. We'll start with the roll call, please.
Mayor Sue Patterson.
Present.
Deputy Mayor Warren Dickert.
Present.
Councillor Harold Fleet.
Present.
Councillor Dave Hawking.
Present.
Councillor Carol Hudson. Councillor Brandon Cable.
Present.
Councillor Susan Sackel.
Present.
Thank you. All members are accounted for. We'll begin with the land acknowledgement. As we work toward reconciliation with Indigenous people, we begin our meeting today by respectfully acknowledging that we are situated on the traditional territory of the Anishinaabe Nation, the people of three fires known as Ojibwe, Odawa, and Potawatomi nations, and further give thanks to the Chipewas of Saugin and the Chipewas of Nauwah, now known as the Saugin-Ojibwe Nation, as the traditional keepers of this land. So, welcome to our Committee of the Whole Meeting for Monday, April 3rd, 2023. Good afternoon, council, staff, guests, the viewing public, and the media. Council, does anyone have a disclosure of pecuniary interest or a conflict of interest? Seeing none, if one should arise during the meeting, you may declare it then. Item four, agenda additions or deletions. We do not have any this afternoon. Item five is our health and safety message brought to us by Councillor Cable.
Thank you, worship. Spring cleaning safety tips. From clearing out Eve's troughs to firing up the barbecue, it's finally spring cleaning season. Just make sure to avoid any potential hazards that might result in a visit to the emergency room. Ladders. When cleaning out Eve's troughs, place ladders on solid footing and have a spotter. Avoid overextending your reach by taking the time to move the ladder into a proper position. If you need any tools for the job you're doing, have them close at hand and easy to reach. In your backyard, do a quick walk-through to check for stones, debris, or garbage that may have accumulated over the winter. Severe injuries can result from stepping on objects or hitting them with your lawnmower, so make sure your grass and walkways are clear. Barbecues. Before turning on your grill, examine all the components to make sure that they haven't been broken or damaged during the winter. Thoroughly clean all grilling surfaces before placing food on them. Medicine cabinet. Spring is the perfect time to give your medicine cabinet a once-over. Dispose of any expired or unneeded medications at a pharmacy with a proper take-back program. Never pour medications down the sink or flush them down the toilet. Air it out. If cleaning indoors, try to opt for natural cleaners like vinegar, water, and baking soda. Not only are they effective at removing dirt and cleaning windows, but they won't expose you to potentially harmful chemicals.
Thank you. I remember the one year when I, you know, in the spring when I was starting the barbecue and I lifted the lid and I don't know who was more startled, the mouse or myself, and I dropped the lid right away. Lifted it up again. But, yes, it did bring back memories. Okay, item six is delegations. We have one delegation this afternoon, and it is Adam Mould, the manager from Service Line Warranties. So, Adam, I see you're online. Welcome.
Well, thank you.
And the floor is yours.
Thank you. Do you mind? I'm just gonna share a presentation on the screen.
Please go ahead.
Thank you. It looks like everyone can see it.
Yes, we can.
Awesome. Thank you. So again, my name is Adam Modi. I am a partnership manager at SOWC, Service Line Warranties of Canada. I've been with the company for about a year and a half now, and I'm the day-to-day contact for our municipal partners. I appreciate you giving me this time to provide a brief update and overview of the Service Line Warranty Program. We've been fortunate to have been working with and providing this program to Hanover residents since 2017. And I'm really here today because since the program's been available for a few years now, I want to make sure that everyone on council has a full understanding of the program, and anyone who wants to has an opportunity to ask any questions they may have. During the overview, I'll quickly walk through who we are, why Hanover is partnered with us, how the program works, how the program benefits the town and residents, and then, of course, as I mentioned, answer any questions anyone has. So I'll just start with a quick overview of who we are. So the Service Line Warranty Program was originally launched in Canada in 2014 with our first partner, Hamilton, Ontario, after responding to an RFP from them. We were then invited by AMO, Local Authority Services, to offer our program to their other members, and we're now partnered with over seventy municipalities across Ontario and Alberta and across North America. We actually work with over eleven hundred municipalities and serve over four point eight million homeowners. Our management team is locally based in Ontario, and we have employees across the GTA in Quebec. I myself am located in Mississauga, Ontario. Our parent company, HomeServe, was recently acquired by Brookfield Infrastructure Partners, a Canadian-based asset management company. And as I've mentioned, we have been partnered with the town of Hanover since 2017, with the program officially launching there in the beginning of 2018. So why do municipalities partner with us? Well, many municipalities find that homeowners are typically not aware of the responsibility for service lines on their private property. In the event of a failure or issue, it's uncommon for them to call up their municipal or town offices only to find out that they're on their own for their repairs, and then from there need to determine if they have any coverage or not, and then, of course, finally go out and coordinate the repairs themselves. So the partnership with SOWC helps inform residents of their responsibilities for service lines on their private property, typically through mailing sent out and paid for by SOWC, and that provides them with an option to sign up for the voluntary warranty plans offered by Service Line Warranties if a resident is interested in being financially protected from a service line issue or failure. So our program operates as a warranty on the service lines themselves, and then the event of a failure of the lines works to bring those lines back to operational status by arranging for and paying the contractors directly up to a plan's particular benefit amount. So typically, basic homeowners' policies will not cover the lines themselves, but rather cover any damages caused by the failure. And while some insurance providers may offer add-on coverage, not all do. So our plans ensure everyone who may be interested in this type of coverage is able to obtain some, as well as provides options when other coverage may be available. So overall, our optional plans from SOWC can help protect homeowners from potentially expensive repairs of service lines, provide them with the convenience of not having to find and vet their own contractors, and of course, encourages residents to deal with leaks quickly. We work with our municipal partners to communicate the program through the channels most appropriate for the residents and ones that make sure all those who may be interested in such a program are able to find information on it. Once residents have received our mailings or other communications and have had a chance to review the information, they are then free to make an informed decision related to their external water and sewer service lines. And if you have a look at the picture down there in the bottom right, you'll see a 2021 survey conducted on behalf as a SOWC noted that sixty-six percent of homeowners believe they were not responsible for damaged water and sewer lines on their private property, which does highlight the need to help inform residents while also making sure a solution is available to them. So we partner directly with municipalities to offer the Service Line Warranty Program to residents, and it's not something that is available in places where we don't have a formal agreement in place. The agreement allows us to promote the program to homeowners, including the use of the municipal logo, which helps find credibility and helps validate the legitimacy of the information, as well as encourages residents to review the material. Overall, the partnership helps ensure residents can trust the information they receive, and then from there learn about the responsibilities for external service lines and weigh the benefits of optional plans that we offer. Our partnership means that we're able to effectively get our information out to residents and therefore offer our plans at affordable rates, which makes them a viable option for interested homeowners. Typically, we're not a company most residents would have heard of, and we just want to make sure that people can trust the information they're reviewing and will not consider it some form of scam or illegitimate. All material we send does indicate that our plans are optional voluntary and that the town does not administer or run the program, and of course, no public funds are used to run the program as well. Our communications arm residents with information on their service line responsibility, and from there, residents are free to sign up for one of our plans, review their options with their existing insurance provider, or they may choose to take no action at all, but they'll still benefit from the information they received. So just quickly kind of run through some of the main benefits municipalities and residents receive from the program. So the first I mentioned is an educational awareness campaign done at no cost to Hanover. Again, these lines are often out of sight and out of mind until an emergency arises. So informing residents ahead of time does allow them to properly prepare in the case of an emergency. We do not send material to residents without review and approval of staff, so you can be confident in the material that we do send. We also do not market door-to-door or over the phone. We work with staff in the town to promote the program through ways in which everyone can agree upon. Our plans include the thawing of frozen water lines. Our repair hotline is available twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, three hundred and sixty-five days a year, so customers are always available to contact us when faced with a service line issue. We arrange for the contractor directly, which alleviates the need for residents on a plan to find and vet their own. If a resident wishes to cancel a plan, we make that easy. There are no long-term commitments and plans to be canceled with thirty days' notice. Plan pricing does not increase when a customer makes a claim, and they can make multiple claims in a year, each with the applicable benefit amount. We are legally liable for any work completed by our contractors, which helps protect the town from liability due to work on shared service lines. And then finally, all work is covered by a one-year guarantee, so everyone can be confident in the repairs completed through one of our contractors and on one of our plans. So I did want to take a quick moment to make sure you are aware of our CARES program. So CARES is an initiative that we have set up to help residents in need. Basically, if a resident in one of our partner communities is faced with a service line emergency, is unable to pay for the repairs, then they can apply for assistance from us. If approved, we'll be able to tap into our network of contractors and help get that resident up and running again. The program is open to all residents and municipalities partnered with SOWC and is aimed really towards low-income households who currently do not have any form of coverage and otherwise cannot pay for the repairs. We know many times these residents call into the municipality looking for help, and unfortunately, may not even realize that they are going to be responsible for the repairs themselves anyways. In these cases, not much the town can do since it is a private side matter, but we do hope that our program could help those residents and really make an impact in their community. So if anyone on staff or council does come across a resident in such a situation, then you can reach out to myself directly. And then lastly, since launching the program in early 2018, I believe we've completed around five mailing campaigns, and with that, one hundred and thirty-one Hanover residents have enrolled in our program. While overall enrollment in the program is affected by many factors, including how long we've been partners and the amount of communications we've done for the program, we're currently averaging around two point five percent of residents in partner communities having signed up for a plan. But I am happy to say that we're averaging over, or just over, three point eight four percent in Hanover. And generally, enrollment builds over time. We also expect claims to build over time as well. At the moment, I believe we completed a total of twenty jobs in Hanover since around 2019, and that will increase the longer residents are on the program and as enrollment increases. I believe in Ontario, we have done over sixteen thousand repairs since the program officially launched. Of course, service lines are generally out of sight and out of mind, and unfortunately, homeowner responsibility and the availability of our plans are also not top of mind when not actively being discussed. We're more than happy to work with you to promote the program through, you know, various means and channels that make the most sense for you and your residents and allow residents to easily find information on our program and help them learn about their service line responsibility. In fact, we have a spring campaign coming up this year, which I hope you'll be able to participate in. The program really is designed to be a long-term partnership, given that service lines are an essential component of the home, continuing to age, and coverage is not always available. So again, I thank you for your time and are grateful to have an opportunity to provide this program to your residents. And with that, if anyone has any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Adam. Council, any comments or questions? Councillor Hudson.
I'm wondering, Adam, if you can tell me, is there an inspection that's required before the policy is actually put into place?
No inspection. When you do, there are some terms and conditions for eligibility, and if you were to call in, really all you're asked is to make sure that you don't currently, you're currently not experiencing an issue, so you don't have an active leak or an active blockage.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Other comments or questions? Deputy Mayor Dickert.
Thank you, worship, and thank you, Adam, for the presentation. How do you handle or is a situation where the service line might be under concrete or some high-end landscaping type of yard, is that covered? How is the landscaping handled, and do they offer restoration after?
That's a good question. So all our plans come with basic restoration. So for, I'll give you two examples. If, if for some reason we had to go into the concrete in the basement to repair something, we would put the concrete back. We wouldn't necessarily complete it, repair any floor finishes that may have been on top of the concrete, but we would put the concrete floor back together. If we were digging up, say, a water line on a front lawn, what would be included would be called basic restoration. So we would, we would put the dirt back in the hole and kind of put the, put the grass seed back, but we wouldn't put back any kind of shrubbery or advanced work that had been done to that landscape. And same with the driveway. If we went through your asphalt, we'd put the asphalt back, but if you had any more advanced type of driveway structure, such as concrete or interlocking, that wouldn't be covered. So the way we describe it as basic restoration.
And one more, is there a maximum amount per claim? I thought I heard you say something through your presentation that there was.
Correct. So there's what we, so the, what we call a maximum benefit limit. So I'm just checking here. I'll give you the exact number so I don't tell you incorrectly. So for sewer lines, it's a maximum of eight thousand dollars per, we'll call it per call. And for water service lines, it's maximum five thousand per call, and those rates are, generally speaking, cast, include the vast majority of claims we have, and that number is for every time you call. So it's not a yearly number, it's a call number. So if you were unfortunate to have a leak in your water line in August, and then again in September, you would be, your plan would be up to that five thousand dollar benefit for both instances.
Hey, thank you for that information.
No problem.
Councillor Fleet.
Thank you, worship, and thank you, Adam, for your presentation. I've got two questions for you. There's twenty repairs have been completed in Hanover. And what was, could you tell me what the total cost of these repairs were? Do you have any idea?
I don't have it off the top of my head, but I could definitely find out the total number and send it over to you.
That would be great. And, and was there any additional cost to the homeowner after these repairs were done?
So I wouldn't know that without looking into each individual repair. So the way the program would work, if there was a particular instance where a repair, the cost of the repair exceeded the benefit limit, then what we would do in that case is we would get approval from the homeowner for them to pay out of pocket the addition, and we would pay everything up until the benefit limit. So if, for whatever reason, a particular job was, was outside of the, our normal claim cap, which, as I mentioned, the majority are not, they're within it, but that's how the program would work, so. I would have to see.
Yes, I would. I would appreciate seeing some numbers if that's available, you know, if you could get, send those to us on the twenty repairs in Hanover.
And I will confirm for you whether or not anyone was out of pocket in any of those twenty repairs.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councillor Hudson.
Adam, can you tell us if there was any common denominators with these repairs? If it was trees or just worn-out lines or anything like that?
I could look into the individual repairs. I don't have actual details off the top of my head on the twenty. I can say there's a lot of different, out of kind of the claims I've seen across Ontario, there's a variety of different things that can go wrong. Roots is a common occurrence. In some areas of Ontario, it's freezing thawing cycles for water lines. In a lot of cases, it's just simple, simple blockages in sewer drains. Those would probably be some of the more common ones, maybe less common would be things such as bellies and sewer lines. I don't know the exact potential issues that may have happened in those particular ones for Hanover. We also do have internal plumbing and drainage plans. So some of the residents in Hanover may have also had those programs, which include interior plumbing lines. And so those things would be like blocked and clogged drains. So some of the claims could be for those as well. But I can get some sense of what the claims were for and see if there's any particular trends or if there's, they're all kind of different.
That would be great. Thank you.
Yeah, of course.
Okay, Councillor Cable.
I think you're worship, and thank you very much, Adam, for the presentation. I think if anything, the presentation really stresses to me the importance of residents checking with their current insurance provider to see whether or not they have coverage for this type of claim and really kind of bringing attention to the fact that, you know, a certain portion of the water and sewer line is the responsibility of the municipality and a certain portion is the responsibility of the homeowner. So hopefully, Hanover residents will give their insurance company a call and see if they're currently covered. And if not, perhaps this would be a service that would be of value.
Of course. And of course, in some insurance companies as well, they, they may offer them an add-on as well. Not all do, but some may. In which case, then we just usually encourage residents to review what the potential coverage they get through their insurance provider is versus the type of coverage, warranty coverage that we offer.
Okay, oh, another one, Adam, Councillor Sackel.
Thank you, worship. Thank you, Adam, for your presentation. I just want to follow up with what Councillor Cable said. I phoned my insurance company today, and I found out I'm covered. So thanks for getting me to do that.
No problem.
Okay, thanks very much, Adam. Very informative and good to get that information out to our residents. So we'll look forward to that information being sent to our CAO or clerk and sharing with the council members. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, on the agenda, item seven, business arising from the minutes. We do not have any. Item eight, staff reports. Eight point one is report PRC zero five dash twenty-three. The subject is the Splashpad Ad-hoc Committee Terms of Reference. It's from Laura Christian, our Director of Parks, Recreation and Culture, and I need a mover and seconder to put this on the floor. I have Councillor Fleet and Deputy Mayor Dickert. Laura.
Thank you, worship. Good evening, council. At the July eleventh, twenty twenty-two meeting, council approved PRC dash twelve dash twenty-two Splashpad Notice of Motion. And this Notice of Motion prioritized the analysis of the proposed Splashpad Facility Development integrated into the town's complement of green space or park properties. So this report directed us to complete a Splashpad feasibility analysis and confirm support for the project in the next steps. So in November, we hired a landscape architect, plural, and their work is currently in progress. We had an interim kind of partial report that they shared their findings with the PRC Advisory Committee, but a final report will be shared with council soon, so that's to, to come. And one of the next steps also included establishing a Splashpad Ad-hoc Committee to guide the implementation of this project and implement fundraising campaigns to raise the funds. So the Splashpad, the proposed Splashpad Committee shall act as an ad hoc committee of the Parks, Recreation and Culture Advisory Committee. At our March meeting, the PRC Advisory Committee had the opportunity to review and provided their support in forming this ad hoc committee. And the Terms of Reference of the Ad-hoc Committee has been attached. I won't go through that entire document unless there's any questions about it. That myself, as well as the manager of Parks, Recreation and Facilities, will be the staff liaisons to this committee. And if you note, we are also proposing a member of council participate on this committee, but we will make that appointment kind of in the future when we're ready to appoint the committee. So if you are interested in putting your name forward for the Splashpad Committee, please reach out to myself or Mayor Sue or Vicky, please. And one area to note is that volunteer commitment is certainly going to be very crucial with the moving forward of this project. And the area residents who originally brought this project forward to council have volunteered to act as co-chairs for the committee. And upon approval of these Terms of Reference, volunteer recruitment will begin. The recommendations before you this evening are that report PRC zero five dash two-three Splashpad Ad-hoc Committee Terms of Reference be received and that council approve the Terms of Reference for establishing an ad hoc committee for the purpose of guiding the development of the proposed Splashpad in Hanover.
Thanks, Laura. Any questions or comments? Thorough report, no questions. Okay, I'll call the question. All in favor of report PRC zero five two-three. This is the Splashpad Ad-hoc Committee Terms of Reference. All in favor? That is carried. Thank you. Item eight point two is report PW zero eight twenty-three. The subject is reconstruction of a section of Twenty-Fourth Avenue. It's the tender, and it's from Ron Cooper, our Director of Public Works. I need a mover and seconder to put this on the floor. I have Councillor Sackel and Councillor Cable. Ron?
Thank you, worship. This report deals with the tender results for the Twenty-Fourth Avenue or County Road twenty-eight project from Fourteenth Street to the Saugian River, as well as the Fourteenth Street urbanization from Twenty-third to Twenty-fourth Avenue. The Twenty-Fourth Avenue portion of it is a joint project between Gray County and the town. It's, both these projects have been included in our twenty twenty-three capital budgets. The project involves recon- reconstruction of Twenty-Fourth Avenue from Fourteenth Street to the Saugian River. It's going to be on a wider platform. It indicates here one point five, one point five meters wider each side for the shoulders or bike lanes. That actually should say one, one point two-five on each side of the roadway wider. Fourteenth Street. And then we're going to have a curb on the west side of, of Twenty-Fourth Avenue, being the county road from Fourteenth Street to the entrance to Saugian Seer Heights subdivision. And along with that, we're going to have a one point five meter boulevard beyond the curb and a one point five meter wide sidewalk. Other works included in that portion of the work is storm sewer, water main installation, and we're putting in duct installation for future traffic signals when they become required at the intersection of Fourteenth Street and Twenty-Fourth Avenue. The Fourteenth Street urbanization is between Twenty-third and Twenty-fourth Avenue, which is going to include curb and gutter on the north side of Fourteenth Street. There'll be a sidewalk in there. Also included, there's going to be street lighting, street lighting on both portions. That's not included in that tender, but though, that work will be contracted out separately. And that is the extent of the work on two of the projects. The tender for this work was advertised in the post and on bid and go. We had six tenders received by the closing date and time of Wednesday, March first at two P M. The low contractor on this one is Cedarwell Excavating Limited of Hanover. The tenders were reviewed by Co-Bite Engineering for completeness and accuracy. They have provided a letter, and they're recommending acceptance of the tender by Cedarwell Excavating. That company has completed previous reconstruction projects within the municipality. The quality of their work and to work cooperatively with the residents has been good. The tender stipulates that the project be completed by October second, and follow-up discussions with the contractor is that they would be looking at a start of sometime in August to commence work on the, on the project. The County of Gray, at their meeting of March, March twenty-third, Committee of the Whole has accepted a report recommending award, award of the Gray County portion of the tender to Cedarwell Excavation, and that's going to be further endorsed at their April thirteenth meeting. The financial implications is, is that the project has come in one hundred twenty-two thousand, two hundred eighty-five dollars and ninety cents, or seven point one percent below the budgeted amount. A large factor of that is actually the contingency. It was budgeted at one hundred fifty thousand when we were in the design stage. Once the designs got further completed up early this year, just before tendering, when it went out to tender, that got reduced down to forty-five thousand. So in each of the categories, we are fairly tight between the budget amount and tendered amount, but we are coming in within, in budget, and that is good news for us. The link to this strategic plan involves the environment and sustainable municipal operations. And the recommendation is, the report PW oh eight twenty-three reconstruction of Twenty-Fourth Avenue, being County Road twenty-eight from Fourteenth Street to the Saugian River Crossing and Fourteenth Street urbanization from Third, Twenty-third to Twenty-fourth Avenue be received and that the project via water to Cedarwell Excavating Limited for a total cost of one million, five hundred eighty-eight thousand, seven hundred fourteen And that the project via water to Cedarwell Excavating Limited for a total cost of one million, five hundred eighty-eight thousand, seven hundred fourteen dollars and ten cents plus H S T. And that the mayor and clerk be enter, be authorized to enter into a contract with Cedarwell Excavating Limited. If there would be any questions of council, I would be pleased to address them. Thank you.
Thank you, Ron. Questions or comments? Deputy Mayor Dickert.
Thank you, worship. Thank you, Ron, for the report. Just curious, any idea how much the street lighting will cost and will the budget? Difference be enough to cover it? Or does that the street lighting come from another area of, of the budget?
The street lighting was into two different sections. I think there's only one, one street light required. On the Fourteenth Street section. And that's like in the neighborhood of five to seven thousand dollars and. I think there's seven street lights required on the Twenty-Fourth Avenue portion. And, you know, once again, that's going to be sixty, seventy thousand. So we will. We will be within the allowance and we also included when I brought a report back to council. The, the cost of upgrading to the sidewalk. Which is included and, you know, within that budget allowance were. Were within in budget, so.
That's good. Thank you. And I do certainly think it's important that we do get the street lights on the sidewalks out there. So that's great news. Thank you.
Councillor Cable.
I think your worship. Ron, at the. Trail East End meeting, I think one of the residents had talked about coming down Fourteenth Street. From the west side, that when you come down to the bottom of that intersection, there's kind of a. A bump, like it comes down lower than where Twenty-Fourth Ave is. As they're reconstructing a Fourteenth Street, will that be addressed to level that out?
Yes, that is going to be addressed in the urbanization. When we look at the road, roadwork portion alone on Fourteenth Street from. What we had budgeted way back in the fall to what the tenders are coming in now, there is a slight increase there. That being said, we're. In the final design is taking out that extra depression out of the design, raising it up to make it blend in more. Making a little more. Full reconstruction work at the entrance, Fourteenth Street on the county road, but it has been addressed.
All right, thank you very much.
Okay, other comments or questions? I'll call the question all in favor of report P W zero eight twenty-three. That is carried. Item nine is correspondence requiring action. We have one item and nine point one, we have correspondence from Wayne Burrow. And he has been the contact for be a donor. Association, I guess, for quite a few years. So he has been sending a letter to us every year, asking, requesting. That the town of Hanover fly the be a donor flag at the civic center. From April twenty-third to the twenty-ninth. And this year he's also asking for it to be. The flag to be flown at the P and H center. So I'm asking either the C A O or our director of Parks and Recreation, is that a possibility? Does that work?
Here, definitely. I'm trying to think from our flag. We have a flag policy. I'll have to double check on the P and H center. Because I think the flag pole here is the designated flag pole for these types of requests.
Okay, so we will follow policy with however it works. And for sure, we will have the be a donor flag here. And just for information, Wayne Burrow is the London Transplant Association moderator. He's the Canadian Transplant Association member and advocate for the Gift of Life Network. So he's very involved and volunteering quite a bit with this. Worthy cause. So, so I do need a mover and seconder that we. Fly the be a donor flag at the civic center and if possible, at the P and H center. So I have councillor Hawking and councillor Hudson. Any questions or further? All in favor? That is carried. Thank you. So moving on, item ten is reports and correspondence for information. And the first one, ten point one is report P R C zero four twenty-three. The subject is Earth Day, two thousand and twenty-three, and it's from Laura Christian, our director of Parks, Recreation and Culture. Laura.
Thank you, your worship. At the January seventeenth, twenty twenty-two council meeting, council approved a notice of motion that directed staff to develop an activity or event. That would serve as an opportunity for all interested residents and businesses to take part in an event that recognizes Earth Day. And includes cleanup of municipal parks, trails and other outside facilities. And so last year was our first event and we certainly, given the success of the two thousand and twenty-two event. These, the events will be continued into two thousand and twenty-three. So. Together, our community, we want to promote awareness for the health of our environment and recognize Earth Day, two thousand and twenty-three. So we're proposing the following activities. So a children's recycled art contest, which will be available for most of the month. And contestants will be challenged to create an art piece using only recycled items. We also are going to repeat our mayor's tidy town challenge. And there's two ways to get involved with the mayor's tidy town challenge. The first one is a week-long litter cleanup. This is where we want to encourage individuals, groups or businesses. Maybe it's, it could be a school, maybe it's your workplace. Maybe it's your neighborhood and you want to get together to clean up an area. Between April fifteenth and the twenty-third. And we are also providing a targeted litter pickup on Saturday, April the twenty-second, which is actually Earth Day. And that will be at the, volunteers are asked to meet at the P and H center for ten A M. For instructions and supplies and will also provide a location assignment at that time. And volunteers should expect about one to one and a half hours of volunteer time. And we will also be providing free refreshments afterwards to thank our volunteers for keeping our tie, our town tidy. And those refreshments will be provided by Holman Motors. And finally, we also are going to repeat our very popular community-wide yard sale or garage sale. And that will also be on April the twenty-second, rain or shine. And that will be from eight A M. to noon. And we are encouraging any residents that want to get an early start on garage sales season that they must register. To participate by completing an application form. And we'll accept registrations until nine A M. on Tuesday, April the eighteenth. And that way we'll be able to include their location on a community yard sale map. That will be available for download at hanover.ca. So financial implications for the two thousand and twenty-three event, there will be a maximum of a hundred bag tags. One per registered household for the week-long litter cleanup. And that will be covered, covered through the public works budget. And staff time and incidental expenses will be covered through the P R C budget. And event prizes and supplies such as garbage bags, gloves and the appreciation refreshments. Will be covered by our generous sponsor, Holman Motors. The recommendation is that P R C zero four dash two-three Earth Day, two thousand and twenty-three be received for council's information.
Thanks, Laura. Any comments, questions? A good initiative. Councillor Sackle.
Thank you, your worship, and thank you, Laura, for your, your news. I'm very excited about this. I, you know, I got involved last year and got my neighbors going. So I have a couple of questions. The application form that you talk about for the garage sale, is it on paper or must it be done online?
We have both options. So the online version is preferred, but there is a paper and you could. Fill that out here as well at the civic center.
All right. Second question, are there any flyers that I could pass this information? I've got a lot of new neighbors in my block.
Yes, I can print some out tomorrow for you and put them in, in your box if, if that works for you.
All right, great. Just send me an email letting me know they're available and I'll come over.
Great. Thank you. Thank you.
Other comments or questions? Councillor Fleet.
Thank you, your worship. I'd like to challenge Deputy Mayor Dickert to a team event here. I know councillor Cable and myself, we hooked up last year. I think you joined us, Mayor, and. I think we like kicked his to the curb. But anyways, I'd like to challenge Deputy Mayor Dickert again this year. So thank you.
Are you picking team members?
Well, the challenge is accepted and I was, you just beat me to it because I know that we had a little competition last year and. I'm pretty sure if you look at the results, we had a lot more than you, but. But thank you for that. And I certainly do hope all council members get involved and certainly want to say thanks. It's nice to have a sponsor come on board again. Or come on board this year. I know last year was the first time and it's great to see the, the corporate side of the town getting involved in this as well. So. Looking forward to it. So thank you, Laura, for your work on that. And like I said, hopefully see all councillors out there helping out that day.
Thank you, your worship. Laura, did you keep track of numbers from last year? Because I, if you could pull those numbers, I'd like to challenge Deputy Mayor Deckard. But anyways, I'm hoping that a councillor cable will join my team and any other councillors that would like to join us. So thank you.
So I guess you can look at it both ways. You can pick up a lot of debris, garbage. Or maybe it's successful and we're not, there's not a lot of garbage out there. So it's hard to say how the numbers will work. Maybe you can make them work the way you want them to make them work. So. Anyway, so the, the challenge has been given. Councillor Hudson.
Thank you, your worship. Laura, is there any way we can involve some of the, the other community groups in the challenge as well, like some of the, the clubs? You know, bumbling, curling rotary lions club. Can we get the word out to them to see if they'll challenge each other as well?
Yes, certainly. Our promotion, we were just waiting for council this evening and then our promotion, we're going to be launching as of tomorrow. And absolutely, any of our service clubs are encouraged strongly to participate.
Great, thanks.
Okay, moving on, item ten point two is the Solgame Municipal Airport Correspondence. Councillor Hawking, did you want to highlight that?
Yes, thank you, worship. I've mentioned this a couple of times at council and. So this is your personal invitation from Jack Sinstra, who is the president of the Friends of the Solgame Municipal Airport. And basically, those are the people who are pilots and owners and D Cs of hangers. And they are really putting on this day. So I hope you take this opportunity. It should be a great day. And you will see it begins at nine A M. In talking to Jack, I think he hopes to have everything done by, by noon hour, but you'll be encouraged to stick around for, by deed at the, at our restaurant. You get a tour. Get a plane ride. Free, a plane ride free. I'm, I've, I've, this is sort of my input. I asked Merle to. Talk to you about the Flight Academy, which is really taking off at, at the airport. He's going to give you, say, a brief ten-minute. Presentation. And then, of course, you'll see our lounge, you'll see all our amenities and what a great place this is. So hopefully all. And you will see the C A Os are also invited and senior administration. So please respond to, that's Philomena's email address by April the thirtieth. Gives us a couple of weeks to organize ourselves, get her, get her prepared and. Just let's hope it doesn't rain. So I'm open to any questions.
Thank you, councillor Hawking. Any questions, comments? Sounds like a good event.
Can I get sort of our hands, how many are, are thinking of coming? Oh, good, good. Thank you for your support.
Okay, item ten point three is the Solgame Mobility and Regional Transit Minutes. Councillor Deputy Mayor Dickert.
Thank you, your worship. February twenty-fourth meeting, we held that meeting virtually to accommodate some members who were attending an out-of-town conference. But future meetings will be in person. We continued to work on our policy revisions regarding open board meetings. We had further discussion and approval of the two thousand and twenty-three budget. An added area of focus is to take advantage of the charitable, charitable status that we have. And what funds might be available through this. So our manager has sent out over eighty letters to businesses and organizations in the area, asking for their support. We approved the sale of some end-of-service vehicles, ones that were just had run their course. I had a discussion on a possible memorandum of understanding with the Holman Community Support Services Group to see if there's any synergies that we can explore there. As they also supply an accessible transit service. We are, had some ongoing work to determine what different operating models look like with regards to a cost per kilometer per vehicle type. Long versus short trips and looking at possibilities of offering different service models to, to the partner communicate. Partner communities. But there's certainly a lot of work to do on that yet as to, you know, how much voting privileges you have if you use a reduced service and all of those things. So. Just at the discussion level at this point in time. There was a preliminary discussion on the March twenty-fourth strap planning session. The January twenty twenty-three operational report showed a forty-eight percent increase in rides over the January twenty twenty-two numbers. And I also made a request at that time that the, our new manager continue to offer breakdown of rides per community so that we can continue to, to. To monitor that and see just how busy the different municipalities are. So that will be coming in future reports. And I think that concludes my report. Any questions? I will do my best answer.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Any questions or comments for Solgame Mobility? Okay, item ten point four, this is an update from the Association of Municipalities, Ontario, regarding housing and homelessness. And on Saturday, March the eighteenth, A M O and twenty-five partner organizations published an open letter to Premier Ford in the print edition. Of the Globe and Mail. The letter called on the premier to end homelessness. And we can join this open letter campaign, as in the town of Hanover can join if we wish, and there is a sample resolution attached. And also in this correspondence is. The federal housing accelerating accelerator fund has been launched. And this initiative provides incentive funding for municipal governments to fast-track the creation of one hundred thousand new homes across Canada. And it encourages municipal governments to develop their applications to support housing affordability in their communities. Now, the application portal opens in June. And I would like to suggest that we ask staff to investigate it if this is something we should be looking into, whether it's at the, our level or at the county level. So. So, and I'll take comments whether you would like to support this resolution or not. Yes? Do I have a mover and seconder that we support at councillor Cable and councillor Fleet? Any further discussion? That's carried. Oh, no, you're supporting. Okay.
Supporting, but I was going to ask, this will also be at the county level as well, correct?
I would imagine, yes. So our resolution would be sent to the county, I think, also. Yes. That's a clerk question, so.
So to clarify, we're passing a motion to send an open letter to support the open letter from A M O.
The resolution that.
That isn't, was included?
Yeah.
Okay. And yes, typically what we do after we pass a motion, we send it to the county and surrounding or member municipalities of A M O.
Okay, did I call that question? All in favor? We'll call it again. That's carried. Item ten point five again is correspondence from A M O and it is. With an update on codes of conduct, changes to visible fees and fees charged to beverage producers. So A M O is calling for legislation to strengthen municipal codes of conduct and enforcement. And also with that. The Beverage Container Recycling Association, there are plans to start charging fees to beverage producers. And this will apply to all sealed and ready-to-drink beverage containers made from glass, paper or rigid plastic. Such as pop, water, dairy and juice. So how the costs might be passed on are at the discretion of the producers. So uh how the costs might be passed on are at the discretion of the producers. So I'm sure there will be more information coming forward, whether that will be on your receipts when you buy a pop or juice or milk. So. Or maybe the producers will be generous and absorb it, but we'll see. Okay, item eleven is, oh, Deputy Mayor Dickert.
Thank you, your worship. I just wanted to add, I did uh in within that letter, there was a section there that said that. Council should prepare themselves to be able to answer to uh. Uh, our residents, whether this is going to have an impact on the taxation level and and I. And Sherry, I didn't want to put you in the spot, but you had, you gave me a great answer uh to my email there. And if you would like to share those details, it would be appreciated. Thank you.
And that was in regards to the um, that was the reply I sent to you today, uh Deputy Mayor Deckard, correct? Okay, sorry, I'm just gonna find it here in my sent emails if I could. And and it was a cooperative uh reply between myself and uh Director of Public Works, uh Mr. Cooper. So. So it it's in regards to the um, um. I gotta get the right words here. The producer funded program for the recycling. And that will be just on, so we are moving towards a full producer um funded program. In in phases and we are two thousand twenty five for our phase. So right now, uh from a recycling blue box curbside um uh scenario. We, we currently receive stewardship funding of seventy two thousand dollars and that is fifty percent. So in the assumption that we receive a hundred percent. That would in twenty twenty three dollars would be about a hundred and forty four uh thousand um accordingly. That being said, we spend about two hundred and twenty thousand dollars in our actual recycling pickup because that's both res- residential and commercial. So the question that Counselor Dickert had asked was, wi- with this moving to full producer responsibility, will we see? Um, that reduce or be eliminated for our budget? And I said, long story short, we still need some more information, but we anticipate. There's still going to be some dollars needed um to deal with the commercial aspect. So that's kind of the answer that was provided accordingly. So.
Deputy Mayor, anything further?
No, I was just better than I could explain it. So thank you.
So, Counselor Cable.
I think your worship. Um, in the note from A M O, there is um a proposed resolution um regarding improved municipal codes of conduct and enforcement. I do wonder if it's something that um council would consider supporting. There is um a draft that is provided. Um, I think we've seen in in local municipalities, not that far from us, that there have been. Some fairly um significant breaches in in codes of conduct in the last uh term of council that unfortunately, in in the current way that things are set up. There's really no significant ramification that can occur um through the Integrity Commissioner, other than um docking pay for a maximum of ninety days. Um, and so I I do wonder if it's something that uh we should consider taking a look at um to ensure that everybody has a safe workplace moving forward.
Thank you. Comments? On supporting? So the resolution, uh they don't have a sample, do they, Counselor Cable? But there is?
There is a sample if you click on.
Legislative amendments to improve municipal codes of conduct and enforcement. Um. It's lengthy, but I could read it if that's helpful. It's not lengthy, lengthy, but. It's enough, whereas is.
Go ahead.
Okay, so whereas all Ontarians deserve and expect a safe and respectful workplace. Whereas municipal governments as the democratic institutions most directly engaged with Ontarians need respectful discourse. Whereas several incidents in recent years of disrespectful behavior and workplace harassment have occurred amongst members of municipal councils. Whereas these incidents seriously and negatively affect the people involved and lower public perceptions of local governments. Whereas municipal codes of conduct are helpful tools to set expectations of co- council member behavior. Whereas municipal governments do not have the necessary tools to adequately enforce compliance with municipal codes of conduct. Now, therefore, be it resolved that municipality name supports the call of the Association of Municipalities of Ontario. For the government of Ontario. Government of Ontario to introduce legislation to strengthen municipal codes of conduct and compliance with them in consultation with municipal governments. Also be it resolved that the legislation encompass the Association of Municipalities of Ontario's recommendation for. Updating municipal codes of conduct to account for workplace safety and harassment. Creating a flexible administrative penalty regime adapted to the local economic and financial circumstances of municipalities across Ontario. Increasing training of municipal integrity commissioners to enhance consistency of investigations and recommendations across the province. Allowing municipalities to apply to a member of the ju- judiciary to remove a sitting member if recommended through the report of a municipal. Integrity Commissioner and prohibit a member so removed from sitting for election in the term of removal and the subsequent term of opposite office.
Very good. So, support moved by Counselor Cable. Seconded by Counselor Hawking. Any further discussion? Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, your worship. And and yes, I I think it is a very worthy uh venture. Um, I believe I'm familiar with the incident. That Counselor Cable was talking about and it was. Disturbing that there wasn't more that could be done to correct that situation. So I certainly fully support uh. Moving forward with that letter. Thank you.
Okay, I don't see any. Counselor Hawking?
Yes, um, thank you, your worship. Uh, thanks, Brendan, for bringing this or Counselor Cable, sorry. Um, you know, we 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 are models of of behavior for the whole municipality. And when, when individuals harass or speak unkindly to the point that. Some people have to leave their position is intolerable. And I hope that the new code has the clause that says. These people are removed from our midst and refused any opportunity to enter public office again. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, all in favor of supporting that resolution? That is carried. All right, item eleven is planning and other meetings. And of course, these are all listed on the agenda and on the website. But I would like to highlight that um the first two, we have two public meetings, the notice of a public hearing. Concerning a proposed minor variance, it will take place on Wednesday, April twelfth at four P M in the Soggy Room here. In the Ha- Hannover Civic Center. This minor variance application applies to lands located at five thirty one eleventh Avenue. And it is to vary the provisions of zoning by law twenty nine twelve dash fifteen. The owner proposes to construct a one-story addition to the existing two-story dwelling for an additional dwelling unit. And a future forty by forty accessory building for a shop and additional dwelling unit. The next uh public meeting, eleven point one point two, uh sorry, a public hearing is uh concerning. A proposed minor variance. Again, it will take place uh on Wednesday, April twelfth at four P M in the Soggy Room. Here at the civic center. It is an application that um applies to lands located at four eighty three ninth street. And the application is to vary the provisions of the zoning by law twenty nine twelve dash fifteen. To allow construction of a covered deck addition to the existing one and a half story dwelling. So that's just for information for uh not just for us, but for uh residents who would like to attend. And item twelve is dates to remember and announcements. We have a special council meeting tomorrow, April fourth at four P M. The next regular council meeting is Monday, April se- seventeenth at four P M. The next committee of the whole meeting is Monday, May first at four P M. And a reminder, the municipal office will be closed on Good Friday, April seventh and Easter Monday, April tenth. So I'll ask at this time, are there any notices of motion? Seeing none, we do not have a closed meeting and I need a mover and seconder to adjourn at four fifty nine. Counselor Sacco and Counselor Hawking. All in favor? That's carried. Thank you.